At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for August 12th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unrecognizable indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the attendance show that Chief Sovick and Councilmember Walton are absent And we'll move on to approval of city council minutes July...I'm sorry?
Would you like the motion to excuse?
Oh, you call it. Um, can I make...can I call?
But you say.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Walton.
I move to excuse Councilwoman Rose Walton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we'll move on to the approval of the city council minutes from July 22nd, 2019.
I move the minutes.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills?
I'll move the bills.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We will move on to the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? Do we approve the agenda and then the consent agenda?
Let me ask next.
I will move on to the consent agenda this evening.
Move the consent agenda. I support.
Any discussion? Yep. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
One little question about consent agenda, item number one. I'm fully in favor of...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
A consent agenda item does not have debate or commentary included, so if you want to have a discussion, you'll need to remove it from the consent agenda or save your comments for your council comments section.
Correct. You can just...you can ask the question in the council comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Thank you, Councilmember Richards. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please state your name and address, and please remember that we do have a two-minute time limit.
Good evening, council and citizens. Ryan Lair, 716 Grand Court. I wanted to inform the public, as I announced at the last meeting, that I'm running for mayor, and the...on August 19th, I'm going to have a meet and greet at the Java House, and then on September 17th, I will also have a meeting, a meet and greet, at the Third Monk Brewery, next to the Marathon Gas Station. I hope that everybody can attend and possibly meet our new mayor, and I can answer any questions. I also did an interview with the Oakland Times, and so that's also on my Merrill page, so if you join the Facebook page, you can view that there. And I would also like to inform council and the residents that I'm very sorry to hear about what happened at the cemetery this last week, and I hope that everybody's families' graves that were demolished and destroyed for absolutely no reason at all, I hope that they're...they got repaired, and the families are happy with those results. So, again, I'm sorry that they were demolished and destroyed. That's people's homes, and their final resting place should be treated with respect. Thank you.
Judy Keeling, Colonial Acres, 62180 Arlington Circle. I know that, from being at the meetings, that you have a company that's assessing our taxes, and he mentioned Colonial Acres, and the summer taxes came out, and they're really, really high. It's very, very hard for a lot of the seniors. They're being charged as much as some people with houses. We don't own our property at all. We only own our condominium. So, I'm asking the council, please, to look into this tax assessment and see if you can help our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comment. We will move on to the discussion of downtown. Mr. Donahue.
Hello. I'll make it brief, just a couple items in addition to those on the report that Paul distributes. The 135 East Lake was approved by the Planning Commission last Thursday night. Inanimate approval of those members present, so we want to thank them for that. So, the project's moving forward. Again, I think the planned completion date is next summer, and I know the discussions with the Italian restaurant have gone quite well, so don't have exact details, but the owner hopes to come in for a demolition of the interior permit this week, so we'll keep that moving. The only other item I wanted to bring up is that according to the new DDA law, Public Act 57 of 2018, there have to be two public meetings to discuss DDA plans, progress, and the DDA budget. The format is a presentation with open discussion, Q and A. So, according to that requirement, the DDA at its meeting last week chose October 10th, 8:00 a.m., at a regular board meeting, and we're going to have a special meeting on Monday, November 4th, and we're trying to confirm the South Lion Theater for a location for that. That'd be 7:00 p.m. November 4th.
What was the date of that first one?
October 10th.
Thank you.
8:00 a.m., and then November 4th, 7:00 p.m. And the reason for the different times, of course, to accommodate everyone's schedule. That's all I have.
Does anyone have anything for Bob tonight?
Yes.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Bob, have you got anything concrete on the Veterans Rock, Memorial Rock situation? And we would like to know, okay, Historical Society, how much of the park...of our section, the parking lot's going to take up? We don't know that. We'd like to see some...the drawings of the final site plan, if you've got...if you're that far on it.
The final site plan was approved by the Historical Society, and nothing's changed. The parking lot is not part of the plan.
The parking lot is not part...
A parking lot was never part of the Veterans Memorial Plan. The recreation plan for the city shows a parking lot there, but that's not part of the Veterans Memorial.
Okay. All right. Then there's a mistaken identity, then. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple things. I just want to make sure that you know that our state representative, Jim Runstad, is reviewing a plan regarding tax credit for buildings over 50 years old. He was going to send me a copy, and I'm sure it's buried somewhere, and I haven't read it yet, but as soon as I get it, I'd like to give it to you. As you know, Jim Runstad is very, very interested in historical...
Yes.
...preservation, and I know you are, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware that this is sitting on people's desks up in Lansing. Do you know anything about it?
Yes. The Michigan Historic Preservation Network proposed that. The statewide association that I sit on, which Paul previously said on that board, we support that effort to bring back the Michigan Historic Preservation Tax Credit, which can be packaged with a federal tax credit.
That's what I was going to ask.
So, and Jim Runstad, big supporter, and we've talked to him, and we love the fact that he supports it.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure that's out there, and that you were aware of it. Additionally, I...when I was at the Motor Fest over the week...two weeks ago, a lot of people were commenting on this butterfly that was painted on Corner Cafe. It's absolutely outstanding. Who is the artist for that?
Well, a little bit of history. There's been a butterfly there for years, and it fades, and it's brought back. So, I think the butterfly goes back several years, so it's been kind of ghosted and then repainted. I think the last person to paint the butterfly was Dana Johnson.
Oh, Dana Johnson?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh. Oh, she's here tonight.
So, while it's technically a mural, I think because it's been there for years, and there's great discussion going on with the Cultural Arts Commission, and we've had discussions in the city to talk more openly with the Planning Commission to kind of clarify the placement of murals, so we hope to get that done soon.
I just want to let you know, it's very lively. It was large. People were standing in front of it, taking pictures. I just want to let you know, it was just a great piece of wall art, and I just thought I would ask.
It is. It is great. We love that kind of thing.
That's super. Also, a business owner contacted me about platform dining and wanted to know where that is, what your position is. Are you going forward? Have you decided maybe no?
Well, my position is kind of irrelevant, but there was great discussion when I first came on in 2016. We talked...Lloyd Collins and I, previous city chief...police chief. We actually had a conversation with Chuck Keller of the Road Commission, and we felt that because of the narrowness in the traffic counts of 10 Mile and Lafayette Street, that we were both in agreement that we were going to not really pursue it. I know they are successful, even in high-traffic areas. Birmingham, probably example. Birmingham has them right on Maple with higher traffic counts. It can be a little controversial. People think they're unsafe, but I think the data shows that they work, and they haven't had issues in Birmingham. But that's kind of where it stands. We did discuss it and didn't pursue it any further after 2016.
Maybe I should have this business owner contact you, because I think they would be interested in pursuing it, and if you have one, I'm sure you'll have two.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, all those ideas, we should discuss those, and the DDA Board will be glad to have a discussion. It'd be great.
Also, when I was at Motor Fest, there was a lot of talk from people that appeared to know or have information. I don't know if they did or not, so I thought I would just go to the source, is that there is going to be a new business moving into the Drafthouse, possibly, that there's a new business coming in. Nobody seems to know who it is, who's running it, what it's going to look like, what kind of restaurant it's going to be, whether it's going to be just a restaurant, whether it's going to be a bar or whatever. But I do have some comments that I wanted to make on that, that I clearly heard people talk about. I did call the real estate company and asked them a couple weeks ago what the price of that property was. Seemed to be a little bit high for what needs to be done to that property. I also have a feeling that I'm pretty accurate about what the prices were paid for the Art Craft Building and for the RCA Building. And the Drafthouse is way off the mark. I mean, I'm just...I have a real estate broker's license, so I'm not that far off. That price is far off compared to what needs to be done, and I think I recall seeing kitchen equipment being moved out of there. I don't know if that's true. I mean, I saw it coming out. I don't know how much...
Yes, it's been removed.
Has all of it been removed?
I'm not sure if all of it, but I know a substantial amount of the stainless fixtures were removed.
So, whoever buys that, and if they're going to use it as a restaurant, bar, is going to have to make a substantial investment just on getting a kitchen in there. And the price they're asking and the amount of money that is going to have to be spent, I just think somebody's being a little bit unrealistic. That's just my personal opinion, because if somebody's going to come in, and I don't know who it is, and they're just going to slap a coat of paint on that building out there and think that this community is going to forget the mess that that restaurant was, and a coat of paint is going to cover it over, they have another thing coming, because I don't think this community's going to put up with it, and South Lion shouldn't have to. South Lion should be commanding top restaurateurs moving into this community. The Italian restaurant that's going to be coming in is going to be competition for that business. The hotel is competition for that business, so if they're not coming in willing to spend a lot of money and to upgrade that property, we're looking at another failure potentially on that corner, because it's going to take money now to come into this town and build a business that's going to have a sustainable clientele, where people are going to want to come and visit them. That's my two cents. So, I don't know if what people were saying was true or not, but, you know, a coat of paint isn't going to do it.
Well, I'm not going to identify the person, because until they come into City Hall and ask for permits, it is all talk.
Okay.
I know that because it's been closed for 12 months, that opens up the ability for the city to look at the liquor license and to discuss a transfer of a liquor license, if that's what happens, versus an outright sale. And so, I have told the people that are considering occupying the building that they're going to have to follow the liquor license ordinance. They're going to have to come in and deal with the building department, so we'll see. I mean, we're waiting. We're waiting for someone to take an official move. And I agree totally that...I've been also frank, so that the public knows. I've been very frank, going as far as I possibly can to tell them about the negative perception and how the last business operated in its final months and the health department issues. So, I've been very frank with those people, and we'll see. I appreciate your comments.
Well, just one more moment. Here's the real issue, is that sitting here on council, now that I have additional information that somebody may be coming before council, I feel responsible, totally responsible, for the businesses that come into this community. And I remember when I was served plasticware down there, because hot water wasn't even turned on, so they weren't even washing their dishes or sanitizing anything. And I feel responsible for that kind of product coming to this town. No. It can't come into this town.
I agree.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kivell, did you have something?
Actually, I'm only too happy to embrace some activity at that location. I think there's a clean slate every time somebody kicks their doors open for the first time, so if it's the same people, if it's other people, whoever, that location has a chance to end up being reinvented. So, I'm going to welcome whatever goes on there until they prove that they can't pull it off. So, I think it's kind of counterintuitive for us to end up assailing some business that might end up considering taking a property that hasn't had good success in the past and forecast for them that they can't make it there, so I think it's our duty to end up trying to create an environment that allows them to be successful, so.
I'll say something.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Yeah, I went by there today, and I was in a hurry. I didn't stop, but the first thing I noticed was that door was unlocked, and it was open, okay? And there's vinyl over the windows, so it seemed, okay? So, that meant somebody was in there and doing something. If it's the previous owners, he's got a full right to be in there, I suppose, you know. I would hope something happens to the building. We all do, you know?
Sure. Sure. I...if I may. We are at a point now where all the restaurants want to be in this community. The problem is, as I've said before, we just don't have a place for them. They need 3,500 to 4,000-plus square feet, and that is really the only facility available at this point in time. And so, if we had facilities, we could have three or four more restaurants immediately, top-notch, you know, upscale. They all want to be here. The days of how would we ever attract one are over. As soon as we have a space that's reasonably priced, which is the key, as Maggie said, so if we have a reasonably priced space, they'll be here in a heartbeat, so that's the big if.
Anyone else with anything for Bob this evening?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business number one this evening, resolution to approve an extension of time limit in paragraph 4A of the conditional rezoning agreement for 825 West Lake Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Well.
I can at least introduce this matter. So, Mr. Langen, on behalf of the property owner and developers here, this is a bit of a technical issue. The city and LV Holdings have entered into a conditional rezoning agreement, which had some time limits. The time limits are allowed by the statute, and I would make everybody think back, at that time, the time limits were really designed to prevent a property from languishing rather than developing. You have before you a developer and property owner who are ready to go. The Planning Commission has looked at the final site plan. Subject to your approval of this, this is ready to go. So, with that, I will introduce Mr. Bob Langen, and if there are any questions, I can also help answer those.
Thank you, counselor. So, for the record, Bob Langen, 128 North Center Street, Northville. I'm a principal of LV Holdings, and basically, although tonight is a, hopefully, rubber stamp extending the time period in the conditional rezoning agreement, I thought that it might be prudent for me to bring in some examples for you to just see what we're thinking and what we're doing. I will note that tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, I will be in my civil engineer's office writing checks and signing applications for the five or six necessary county and state permits that we need to go ahead with this project. We're in the process of fully funding the project, and we're full steam ahead. So, we also already have, although it wasn't necessary to get for final site plan, we did go forward with engineering and architectural construction drawings, so we are forging ahead full boat. And what I have brought for you to look at, just for your edification, I think you've seen the color rendering of the exterior facade. I brought the finalized landscape plan and civil drawing, and I brought material samples, if anybody cares to have a look or a touch, or I'll carry it out to you, whatever, but anyway, this is just for your information, as I ask for a extension of our timeframe to get the final site plan actually approved.
Does anyone have anything for Mr. Langen?
Yes.
Councilmember Preising, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Langen...or Attorney Langen, can you hand me the one in the middle? That one? Yes, that one right there. Thank you. Thanks so much.
While she...in best case, this...
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Okay. You were the one that had made the request for eight months for approval, weren't you?
That's correct.
Rather than the year that is typical? Yeah. So, I mean, I'm not hung up about any delay or anything, so I was really very pleased to see this move forward as quickly as it did. I thought that the comments that planning had were pertinent and did end up putting a better project together, so I like the additional stone on there, and, you know, it does dress the exterior up better, so...
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to this moving forward. I don't have any resistance, so...
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I've got some questions.
Did you guys want to say anything?
Nope, I've seen it. Thanks.
Councilmember Richards, you have a comment?
I have some comments and questions. Mr. Langen, are you the same Robert Langen that was here one year ago that we approved the initial site plan?
I am.
There's several Robert Langens, as I understand.
Well, there's two that I know of, yeah.
Okay. Are you the father or the son, or the grandpa?
Well, I'm the father to my son, but my dad is my father, so I'm...I mean, I'm not trying to be cute, but my dad is Bob Langen, and my son is John Robert Langen III.
Okay. Well, I was told there was three, but I'd like to have it clarified, which...
Well, my son goes by Trey, so he's not technically Bob.
I thought the tenant in your house over there told me that your son's name was Brian. Is that correct? That's not correct.
I don't know what he told you, but I don't know a Brian Langen. I have a brother named Ryan Langen.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Preising, what is your point of order?
What does this have anything to do with the actual subject matter at hand?
Okay. I'll try to get to the point. Mr. Langen, I voted in favor of your proposition the last time, but it will probably pass tonight, but I played by voting no against it this time, because there's a whole lot of things that you haven't told us that I've found out. I've done a lot of research on this. We're glad to have apartments and buildings and developers come in, but you own a lot of property. You love corners.
I think you probably have me confused with my father, Councilman Richards, and I'd be all too happy to have a private conversation with you and tell you my life story.
Is he...which...
Councilmember Richards.
LV Holdings is not the individual person. LV Holdings is a corporation.
It's a limited liability company. L stands for Langen, that's me. V stands for Valvona, that's my brother-in-law, Michael Valvona. He's my partner. You've met him here.
Okay. Well, there's...if part of it's all in a holding company, okay, then no one has any real liability individually. It's all tied up, okay? I give you credit, and you pay for your land up front, okay, with everything you buy. A lot of them don't, but, okay, then you get investors and partners and everything, and issue shares or whatever, and then nothing ever gets built.
I can assure you, that is absolutely not my plan. I've spent my personal money buying this property. I've spent my personal money investing in the approvals and paying the consultants to come here before you with our best effort to bring a great product to the city of South Lion, and I can assure you that I have not used other people's money on this. I've used mine, and I'm here before you.
I said, you use your own money to buy on the land, but was it you or your father that put...when it trains...I've been to Lion Township, okay, and talked to them. In 2016, when it went to LV Holdings, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Was it you that put the $100,000 into that house through eight and nine, or was it your father?
It was my father. I purchased land...I purchased this...LV Holdings purchased this land, which you'll see is part of the conditional rezoning application, and it's public knowledge, so I don't mind sharing. My brother-in-law and I formed LV Holdings and bought this land for $200,000 cash that we paid to my father for the property.
Okay. And that was in 16, July of 16, I believe, okay? All right. In 17, you applied for annexation into the city of South Lion, because you were still in Lion Township at that time.
Correct.
And it's according to Mrs. Marisha Cash, Melissa Cash at the quirk up there?
Michelle Cash.
Michelle Cash, okay.
The clerk for Lion Township.
Yes. And I talked to this fellow, David Harriman, today. I've never met the man.
David Harriman's the building enforcement officer of Lion Township.
Yeah. When you found out that the Lion Township sewer system would not be coming down the county line from 12 Mile to 11 Mile, and then through the property of the blah, 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 Shing Company, the Shing Development, okay, along that line, and going through that 30 acres just to the north of you, okay, which is a landlocked piece, right on the Dexborough line, where Dexborough went through, okay? Then you found out there's no hope for sanitary sewer and water line, a trunk coming through there. there, okay? So then you say, well, I'm gonna, for then, then you say, I'm gonna annex to the city. Okay, just fine, we love it.
In fact, if I may.
The thing of it is, okay, you're 1,000 feet from any trunk line, okay, for connection with sewer and water. And we're not obligated to give it to you. You'd have to pay for that big time, okay, to get a trunk line to hook up, okay? And that, I don't see it as feasible, okay? For this thing to, it's a, sure, it looks beautiful on paper, but the history has shown that you buy it and have plans, and then nothing gets done. In the meantime, that house, which is, which would be a 200, if it was brand-new, it'd be a $450,000 house. As a used house, it's 275. But to tear that down, when you could just move it 150 feet and build something feasible around it, okay, for senior after-care centers or health facilities or something, instead add 24 apartments that are just pie in the sky, I don't think it'll ever happen. What you have, you could do something with. And you, okay, you continually like to knock down the trees. I was in the tree business years ago, sir, and I handled my walnut trees. Those walnut trees are not export veneer, but they are top-grade sawlog, long-stemmed, double-hearted, with darker wood on the inside. And they're worth $10,000 on a stump. And it'd be a shame, cut those beautiful trees and just bulldoze them out of there for nothing, if nothing else ever goes on there. So I'm just saying, I got reservations on the sincerity of your development, because you're, the development, 7 Mile, 8 Mile, Riverbank.
Mr. Mayor, which comments would you prefer I could respond to of Councilman Richards? I'm happy to answer all of them.
Right, okay, I understand, I understand. Okay, I'm in favor of, I know you're gonna get your extension, okay? Good for you. But I'm not gonna vote for it this time. I voted for the last time for you, but you haven't been completely truthful with us in the whole thing. That's my statement on it.
Well, Councilmember Richards, Mr. Langen has made it pretty clear that if you'd like to have a private phone conversation with him, he would probably be able to assist you in what it is you're looking for. Mr. Langen, if you would like to respond to any of that, please feel free, but it was a multi-leveled question there.
Yeah. Well, I'll do my best, and, Mr. Richards, if I fail in any way, please remind me. So I'll go in reverse order. As you will see, and you can take all the time to review this as you like, there are nine, as I recall, there are nine mature walnut trees along, this is Dixboro Road. I have a total of 15 walnut trees, and I've had foresters, or log cutters, or timber buyers come out and assess the value of those trees, and they are valuable. They're quite valuable. But we made the decision to keep nine of the 15 of them, because we could. And they're beautiful trees, and they're mature trees. And hopefully, that's a satisfactory number. The planning commission thought so. We've preserved nine, I think nine, if it's eight or if it's 10, I'm not exactly sure. So I hope that helps to calm those fears down. You'll also see that our site is heavily landscaped. We took pains to make it very green, very well-shielded, or well-planted, to address any neighboring property concerns, that we feel is gonna bring a very high-quality presentation of this apartment complex to the community. I will elect not to take personally your concerns that I'm not gonna do anything. I think you have me confused with somebody else. I have no history of saying one thing and doing another, and I just don't take that personally. But I can assure you that this project will be built. Now, somebody may buy it, I'm not saying that. If somebody were to come along and buy it, that would be okay. But I have a personal plan with money and financing that I'm going to be a principal of this company and build and develop and own this project, barring somebody paying me a ridiculously large amount of money that they probably shouldn't pay me. And I'll go on record and say that.
Okay, let me ask you another, in other words, you're telling this council that you would stick to your original plan, rather than just wait for the interest rates to go up a little bit, and then try to get a gas station in there?
I'm not smart enough to play that kind of game, sir. I'm here before you, telling you that tomorrow morning, I'm buying permits to get this development started before the snow flies, with money in hand. That's what I'm telling this council, in no uncertain terms.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell, Councilmember Prezian made a motion to speak first. Go ahead.
Mr. Langen, can you take that picture that's in front of us, too, and swivel it around so people can see in the audience?
Absolutely.
Because it looks like there's interest as well.
Well, is it, is it okay for you to use this easel?
Easel?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll end it there. But it looks like we have further discussion, I was gonna make the motion.
Right, yeah, I think Councilmember Kurtzwell had something to add. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Langen, I know of you. We have battled in court. You've been an excellent adversary.
Thank you, likewise.
I do represent some real estate developers, and I wish you were one of my clients. I think what it is, is that we have a misunderstanding sometimes of how developers work. And it's not uncommon for a developer to purchase seven, eight, nine pieces of property, and wait for a proper economic timing with respect to either selling, and take the gain, or to develop and hold on to it, or to develop it, and then sell it. So there's a lot of different things that one can do with real estate. And no one opportunity is the same as another opportunity with real estate. So you can't really pigeonhole your business model and say, well, why aren't you doing this, and why aren't you doing this? Because maybe, maybe your business model doesn't call for that. And we're not privy to every little detail of the business model that you're using to develop this project. I would like to remind the gentleman to my left that the city of South Lyon has owned Volunteer Park and has done minimal development, and that's been over 20 years. So it's not unusual for somebody to hold real estate until you either have the funds, the money, the approval, or maybe you just want to hold on to it. We had an individual that recently passed away that held on to real estate in our downtown area, and.
I'm familiar.
Yeah, so, so I don't think you're doing anything that is unusual, that is out of the ordinary. You have a plan, it's been approved by the planning commission, you have funds, which you don't have to tell me where your money is coming from. It's none of my business. All that I care about is that a viable unit with houses, where we're gonna get tax monies and individuals walking into our downtown, and adding to the population downtown, that's the goal that I'm interested in. But other than that, I am quite confident that you will develop this property, and you know what? If you can sell it and make a buck, good for you. I wish I was part of that partnership.
Well, thank you.
But I don't have the money to be part of it, so.
Appreciate the comments.
So good luck to you.
I will just restate, in very, very clear terms, it is absolutely our aim to get this done as quickly as possible. And I'll remind the council that this is not the only timeframe in the agreement. We have a one-year to get our first building permit, I believe it is, and then we have another year and a half after that to get a CVO. So we're not absolved from the ticking clock, this is just a situation where we asked for the extension and applied for final site plan approval within the timeframe that was given to, or that we negotiated in the agreement, and with pointing no fingers, we all just couldn't get it done in time.
Councilmember Kivell, please.
I have one more question. Actually, you have three years from the time that if we approve this, three years to complete the project.
Very well.
What's our leverage in the event that it's not complete by then?
To visit resulting in the conditional rezoning being revoked?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So under the agreement, the zoning, which was subject to the conditions of constructing a certain development, would be revoked on its own terms, and it would revert back to its original zoning. So remember, this is, part of the purpose of this is to keep the developer on task, because a partially finished development, you want to finish it. You don't want to have it stalled and have somebody walk away. So the idea here was to continue to keep the developer on a timeline that's achievable, so that they can proceed and complete the development without being rushed, but not let it languish either.
My concern is, okay, in the event that there's a change of financial position in America, and we run into a 2008 or something, so you've got two of the three buildings are complete, the third one languishes, wondering whether or not you want to put the money into it. So are we going to repeal the zoning that the two completed construction?
That's a less clear question, and this property really would be no different than any other property that's under development. You don't want a half-finished development. So if it were, you know, a nationwide economic recession, that's really out of our control. I think the purpose of this agreement was to implement a schedule that was achievable for the developer, and to keep them on task and make, and complete the development.
I can't hold you to this, but I would like to ask, do you have a sense of which structure you plan on starting with?
Yes, and I'll also, in answering your question, add to Mr. Wilhelm's comments. So from the beginning, this was always intended to be a single-phase development. So we're going in with our investment dollars and our bank dollars, and quite frankly, our contracts with our contractors, to view this as a single-phase development.
Sweet, good, okay.
Which would reduce the likelihood, I mean, you know, in 08, the banks pulled the pin on halfway-funded projects.
Sure.
And they got sued to death and everything, and blah, blah, blah. But, I mean, barring some major-league problems, we are entering this with eye on a single effort to complete the project on-site the whole time. And to that, I believe our intention, I'm not really the construction arm of, but I believe our intention is to build this building first, building three, yeah, building three. So the point is, is that as we go in and do our land development and start building this building, as we're building these buildings, this building is kind of off to itself and isn't gonna be impacted by the continued presence of heavy trucks and loud noises and lots of diesel engines.
I like the idea in that it incentivizes the idea of your dispatching of this project as quickly as possible, rather than creating a revenue stream from one building being operational, and then you just kind of piecemeal work on the other two. So I'm happy to hear that your intentions are to go in one fell swoop.
Yeah, we have it all pro forma'd out, including partial occupancy, but our financing is intended to cover the entire project at one time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I've always found on construction projects, the problem isn't building the structure, it's doing the site improvements and the land balancing. What, I mean, that's just, you know, the hills, the topography. How long do you think it's gonna take to clear land and balance everything, so that you can get your site improvements in?
Well, I'm very glad you asked that question, because in part of my life, I owned a site work and underground excavating company. And this job should take three months, or less.
I got a question.
That's nothing.
Gary Dunn.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, let's see.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interrupt.
Yes.
I noticed on the agenda note that I missed, in the suggested motion, I have a 60-day reference. I thought I had caught that and cleaned this up, but it is, would be extend to eight months to a full year, August 27 of 2019. The planning commission has already reviewed the final site plan, and, subject to this extension, approved the final site plan. So by doing this, they will have their final site plan approval, barring and complying with other conditions imposed by the planning commission. So I just wanted to point out that 60-day reference is incorrect.
So it should say eight to 12 months?
Yeah, please say what the, state what the accurate.
So it would be, I think I had it as, it's four months, so it's eight months to one full year, four months or 120 days.
120 days is four months.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right.
I thought it was eight months or 12 months you said, Tim.
Eight months, well, they were allowed eight months.
Right.
And we're going to extend it to 12.
Extended to 12, right, yeah.
And that's a four additional months.
Okay, I'd like to approve the resolution approving LV Holding LLC's timely request for 120-day extension of the time period for final site plan approval in paragraph 4A of the conditional rezoning agreement for the real property located at 825 West Lake Street, tax ID 21-30-126-005, and authorize the city manager to sign a letter agreement to that effect.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Richards has made it clear that he has a comment, so we will discuss.
Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Langen, I'm sure things are going your way. I want, it hasn't been said on this council, exactly what your acreage is. It is 4.4 acres, I'm to understand. Is that correct? Well, it does, it says that in the Lyon Township documents that I've got.
I don't want to take an official position on this, because I don't know. Some part of me believes it is 4.65, but it's four and change.
Okay, so it's stated in the council minutes, okay? Second point, you acknowledge that you're at least 1,000 feet from a trunk line for sewer and water to get to that property.
I acknowledge no such thing. I am not a civil engineer. I have not undertaken a study of the sanitary sewer presence or absence in the city. My civil engineer has assured me that this design includes adequate services within close enough proximity for us to go forward with it. We have engineering construction cost estimates, we have contractor estimates, and I trust the people that I pay to consult me.
Okay, fine, we'll leave it at that. I'm just stating my point on it, okay?
Very well, understood.
Now, the next, the last point, do you have any intention of purchasing the adjoining five acres, or six or eight acres of the Chuck Smith property that L shapes out to Pontiac Trail? I mean, I mean, what am I saying? Lake Street, okay, where the Thomas Duke sign is out there? That's swampland, okay? Anyway, do you have any intention?
Are you trying to sell me some swampland? Because that's state-regulated, and I can't build in it.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be smart, but.
Okay, I'm just saying.
I have not.
I've been asked, asked you questions.
Some knowledge of the property to my east and to my south.
What's the pertinence?
It's not.
Okay, you have a history of filling in swamps.
Pardon me?
You have a history of filling in wetlands, okay? Your company does.
Sir, I do not have any such history.
Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, I don't see where the relevance of this line of questioning is relevant to your site approval that we are providing with you tonight.
Thank you.
And I would ask that the mayor suggest that the gentleman to my left cease his questioning.
Okay, I concede.
Councilmember Richards, I believe Mr. Langen's made it pretty clear that if you have a laundry list of questions, that he would take your phone call as well.
We can get together some other time.
I would be delighted, sir.
That's fine.
So we have a motion and a second. A motion by Councilmember Kivell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve the resolution approving LV Holding LLC's timely request for a 120-day extension of the time period for final site plan approval in paragraph 4A of the conditional rezoning agreement for the real property located at 825 West Lake Street, tax ID 21-30-126-005, and authorize the city manager to sign a letter of agreement to that effect. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your consideration, counsel.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Langen.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business number two this evening. Resolutions to adopt and implement a local agency pavement warranty program.
Mr. Mayor, I can address this matter as well.
Thank you, Tim.
So you have tonight, two different resolutions, one to adopt. together these documents, they were reviewed by MDOT, and these apply to paving projects with typically, it applies to $2 million worth of paving components when it involves state or federal funding. I've been advised through the city's engineer that you have not had one of those projects with that level of funding in their experience, you have it in mine, but nonetheless, you're required to adopt and implement this. You could always choose to implement and impose a warranty on any of your projects, but really, that $2 million threshold is where the statutory reporting requirements and the consideration of a warranty program are triggered. So this is really a state shove-down kind of concept. I don't know that it will be something that you really have to deal with front and center, given the size of your community.
Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
Well, we're obligated to act on this, but at the same time, especially when the remedies for having to implement a warranty, I mean, it can fail within five, or if it goes five years, that, you know, that's the end of the warranty. Well, in the meantime, you've added substantial amounts of cost in all the testing and proofing and all that kind of thing, so I think that it's really counterproductive, and it's sort of one of those unintended mandates that they end up throwing on us, and we're the one picking up the pieces financially, so.
Mr. Mayor, so in my discussion with the city engineer, I wanted to find out what they knew and what their experience with these warranties was, and that was generally his comment, was they're very, they add quite a bit of cost, and many communities elect not to use a warranty even when they've met the threshold, simply for that very reason. But it is, if you read the rationale behind the state legislation, it's really to create a uniform system, so that paving contractors and the communities implementing it have a structure within which to deal with problems in a paving project.
It actually simplifies things and gets more reliable performance out of big-job contractors, but that's not where we're at, so.
Correct.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, I'm sure we'll go along with this warranty. My question is, are we assured that with this warranty, that our engineers, HRC, will be monitoring the batch mix of concrete that goes into any road that we have a concrete resurfacing, and also the batch of the asphalt where we pour asphalt, such as Hagadorn Street Asphalt, Liberty Street Concrete? Do we have assurance that HRC is going to be monitoring that we get the right batch mix in this?
They always do.
So, Mr. Mayor, it's a technical question, and this is really just a program for implementing a state setup and available warranty program. I don't, I can't speak to the details of what is in the warranty program and how it's administered, but it's essentially an administrative program that provides for a warranty based on whether it's asphalt or concrete paving, given certain parameters, and you could always do these things, so I don't know how to answer your question, other than it's much too technical for what's being considered by council.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the adoption of the local agency pavement warranty program.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kivell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy.
Mr. Mayor?
Tim, yes.
Again, there's a separate one to adopt it.
I was going to do that after this one's approved.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Okay.
My apologies.
Fair enough. So again, we have a motion by Councilmember Kivell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve the resolutions to adopt and implement a local agency pavement warranty program as presented. Is there any further discussion on the first one?
No.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed? Motion passes.
If I could, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution to implement a local pavement warranty program.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kivell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to implement the warranty program as presented. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
If I could, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution to implement a local pavement warranty program.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kivell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to implement the warranty program as presented. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's pass. Thank you. New business number three this evening. UV system completion, bank two, bank one already approved and completed.
Mr. Mayor, the explanation of the topic, the wastewater treatment plant is requesting to purchase UV modules and ballasts to complete the renovation already started, which is already 50% complete, and the entire UV disinfection system. This is designed to disinfect the treated wastewater to meet our permit requirements as stated in the EGL inspection reports. We do have the cost breakdown for the modules, as well as the ballast, the total cost would be $22,299, which is covered in this year's budget under line item 592-557-970. The request also is to waive the competitive bid process, and the equipment is proprietary to Wadco, and represented by Kennedy Industries in Michigan. We've attached the quote and invoices, as well as some photos of the equipment, for you to get an idea what the equipment looks like, so we have two motions. One is to waive the South Lyon Code of Ordinances for the approval of the purchase, and the second one is supported to actually approve the purchase. Our utilities director is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this. You do have in front of you, based upon a request, and notice that we did have a mistake within this, because we didn't have, the two motions included a new agenda note for you to review.
Councilmember Kivell?
I just happened to notice one invoice that speaks to the idea of an AC unit, 6,000 BTU for $59.95. That's nowhere in the bid that you're looking for an approval of.
So that was actually already purchased, yeah, so that should not have been included, actually. That's not required. They already did that on the first phase.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Basically, we're just replicating what we already did with the first phase, right?
Yep, we're basically halfway there, and just want to get the rest of the UV system completely intact.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to waive section 2-224 of the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, approval for purchases or contracts over $2,000, competitive bidding for purchases or bidding over $5,000, because no advantage to the city will result from competitive bidding.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Parisian. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
And I'd like to make the motion to approve the purchase of the final bank of lights and ballast for $22,299, to render this UV renovation project complete.
I'll second.
Okay.
Just kidding, take it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Parisian, to approve the purchase of the final bank of lights and ballast for $22,299, to render this UV renovation project complete. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Just one quick question, Doug. Do you have, what's the expected life expectancy on a unit like this? Just go, any idea?
Five to 10 years, probably.
Okay.
If I had to guess.
Just curious.
And that's up to us, too, at the plant, too. We try to keep and maintain it as best as we can, and like anything else, everything has a shelf life, whether it be the front-end loader or the bulb.
That's great, I appreciate it, thanks.
Yep.
Good job on your motions.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business number four, the purchase of concrete scarifier. Is that how you pronounce you did that?
Yes, the Department of Public Works is requesting to purchase the concrete scarifier to, for, to prepare for line striping and grinding and leveling potential trip hazards on city sidewalks and streets. This piece of equipment qualifies for grant funding under the MM RMA program, up to 50%. We do have on there for the Edco gas scarifier, Edco startup pack, total cost is $5,258, and is covered in this year's annual budget under 440715977. The lowest bid of the three bids receivers was from Ace Equipment. We've attached a copy of the photo of the equipment, and there is a motion for that purchase. And Doug is here to answer any other questions you may have on that as well.
Councilmember Kivell?
I just wanted to make a comment, that if this thing works well, it's going to be in service a long time, because we have so many lips on sidewalks that this thing could address, and, yeah, and we haven't been getting an awful lot of people that are voluntarily deciding to pay us to change flags out on their, in front of their property, so I'm looking forward to this.
We've had one today, we found one today.
Terrific.
So we're, I'm going to be meeting with him, that gentleman, this week, so hopefully we'll have one 50/50 guy contributing.
Good deal. That actually is quite a nice incentive, and I don't think that we're, we probably should be a little bit more robust in pretty much putting that message out there that it's available, so.
Definitely.
Yeah, I agree.
Councilmember Kennedy, and then I'm coming down to you, Councilmember Kurtswell.
Yeah, I'd like to just commend the folks that were involved in securing the grant for 50% of the cost of that effort, of the equipment. I think that's commendable, it obviously makes the purchase that much more attractive. We have discussed this previously, we discussed it during the budget preparation workshops and so forth, and I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of the Edco concrete scarifier for $5,258.
Councilmember Kurtswell, you had something to add?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, and then, I did have a question about the equipment. Some of these equipment pieces will actually take and level the side, they'll smooth it out, so if there's like a crack, it will go in, you'll kind of see it on an incline. Is that what this will do?
Mostly just grind.
It just grinds.
It'll just grind away, yeah. And it also designed, is designed to grind away and prep surfaces for striping. And so the downtown, the game plan for this scarifier essentially is going to be to beautify, or however you want to say it, the downtown lines, so all the parking lines make sense a little bit better. That's the future of the project, of what we're going to do with this, but we will do some grinding as well, too, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'll make something.
I'm glad you're on board.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kurtswell, to approve the purchase of the Edco concrete scarifier for $5,258. Councilmember Richards, you had something to add?
Yes, I just want to say, we've needed this for a long time, okay? I hope we get a warranty on this item.
Oh, yes, there will be one.
This isn't a item that makes a terrazzo floor.
No.
But it does take off the hump and the brake, that knocks people off their bicycles and wheelchairs and one thing or another, okay, when they're going over curbs and so forth. It's wonderful addition.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for being here, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
We'll move on to the budget this evening. Does anyone have anything on the budget? Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two points. I read the July 24 letter from Plant Moran. I was a little bit concerned about one of the statements that they actually made in there. It says, "We have identified the following significant risks of misstatement." So, are you familiar with that?
I'll review that, I've not seen that document.
Yeah, yeah, this is a pretty significant point that they are making. It's regarding overstatement of revenue balances, so I think if you have a moment tonight, if I could sort of discuss this with you, that'd be great. The other issue is, is there any way that the department heads can have access to the system? I don't know if they, I don't think they do now, the system where they can get into the budget. For example, we'll use Doug as an example. He had, let's say, his capital outlay is $24,000, tonight he goes and gets approval, a total of, you know, $30,000, or whatever, you know, it gets approved tonight. Within a week, is he able to go into that budget himself, and look at his line items to see how much money he has left? Or does he have to physically come over here to City Hall and meet with the finance administrator and get that information?
Usually what transpires is everybody gets a copy of the current budget and the numbers and the expenditures that, on a monthly basis, so anybody can see what the revenues and expenditures are for the whole budget. They usually, and would review before a purchase, and make contact with the department to find out what monies are available, and to ensure that they are going according to what the budgeted amounts actually are. So they do not necessarily get into the budget, but they do have a copy of it, and they can review it at any particular time, because they get a monthly report, just like you do.
And why don't we allow them? I'm just curious for the argument as to why we don't allow department heads to have more real-time access to the budget? This is not about changing any numbers in the budget, this is about view-only mode, where they can access that budget anytime, 24/7, and take a look at where they stand in real-time with the budget, rather than waiting for a monthly report.
Well, the real-time numbers potentially change on, could potentially change on a daily basis, and it's better that they do, in fact, make contact with the department, with the department head, the finance, to find out what those numbers are. We can review a particular policy to see if they can look at numbers more up-to-date than what they have, but by providing a monthly report, they know exactly what's there, but they know that these numbers are changing daily, based upon expenditures and based upon check runs.
I just had an opportunity to speak with some individuals at another city, and that seemed to be a tremendous advantage to their department heads, to have that kind of access to do. I mean, they were on this monthly reporting and went to more of a real-time, being able to look at that budget. I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
Okay.
But, doesn't have to happen, I just was curious, it worked for one community, I know we're not, I don't, I don't think we're doing it here. But that's all I have on the budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
Well, if I could, I would, I'd like to ask, what you see as the benefit of that? I mean, the money is meted out at July, and it's spent down during the course of the year, so why would it change?
The numbers are changing, like he said. If I were Doug, in two weeks, I may want to make another capital expenditure, but do I make it now, or do I wait until, you know, three months from now, four months from now, five months from now? I think the feedback that I got was that it allows individuals to have a better understanding of where they stand in terms of their expenditures, when they have real-time access to the budget. It works very well for other communities.
So are these things that hadn't been addressed in the budget, and then they suddenly want to buy something?
Could be. I mean, that could be one of the reasons why somebody would want, and it's view-only mode. The mode is only view-only, they're not, they can't make any additions or changes, they can't alter anything. This is simply a view-only mode. It has, I think the software has a tracking, where anybody who gets into it with their password will be tracked when they got into it.
Anybody would do that.
Yeah, so...
I just don't understand how, nothing that's going on in our departments are going to end up being influenced by the spur-of-a-moment kind of decision, that isn't going to be reflected. The position of where they're at now won't end up changing so substantively that they couldn't act on something, or forecast whether an embellishment could come out of general fund, maybe if they had some emergent thing that needed to be addressed. So I guess I just don't understand where the instant review would end up being a real assist.
No, I mean, I think that, I mean, that's an argument, you know, that you make. I'm just going off of experience and feedback that other department heads in another city have found it extremely useful. They have a lot more transactions, it's a larger city.
Yeah, sure.
So I just, I would bring it up. Thank you.
Anyone else with anything on the budget this evening?
Nope.
Great, we'll move on to the manager's report.
If you kind of so want to make, regarding the city water supply, the new well's been installed and tested in McCady Park. Next phase is going to be connecting the pump and building the new wellhouse around, structure around the item, around the well. Auditors are here from Plant Moran finishing up. We expect that we'll make an audit presentation the last council meeting in September, or the first council meeting in October. We've already engaged Plant Moran to start with the water and sewer analysis, as was identified in this year's budget. Purpose is to analyze our cost structure and determine our future rates for water and sewer, so we can make the necessary improvements and repairs to our water and sewer infrastructure. And this work will commence right after the completion of this year's audit. We are getting ready to demo those two buildings that we talked about within this year's budget, one being at McCady Park, and the other, the Slayer Building. Engaging the contractor first to do the asbestos inspection, to determine the extent of that, and what removal techniques we need. to determine the extent of that and what removal techniques we may need to have at that location, those locations. Uh, cemetery update, I did want to bring up, uh, a couple items. Uh, one is our DPW staff and office personnel have, were going through in great detail to identify, um, the cemetery stones that were left damaged at the cemetery that we discovered last Thursday. Um, we, um, went out there, took photographs of all the particular locations. We fielded hundreds of calls, contacts with staff, numerous personnel, been talking with, uh, obviously concerned residents and people who have loved ones that are buried at the cemetery. Uh, we were, um, engaging conversations with our insurance company regarding, um, the damages that did occur on site. Uh, we started to ascertain how many, um, locations were actually damaged within the cemetery. There were police reports that were actually created that did, did identify locations. Um, we did have some, I'm sure, with all good intentions, some good Samaritans that started to re-stand up some of the stones within the cemetery. We did make the request to the public for that not to happen because we were worried about further damage. It also prevented us from further identifying the exact locations of the stones because we did have preliminary conversations with a monument company, uh, to try to give us a guesstimate on costs and, based upon the numbers of stones that were damaged and that needed to be reset. Uh, with the next day, we, uh, did start to review, went out meticulously through the whole cemetery, identifying with employee from the DPW and employee from the office that knew the cemetery better than anybody based upon locations, lots, and numbers, and have put together spreadsheets and identifying those locations. In the meantime, there were some more stones that were actually put up, and we did make contact with the, uh, memorial company, and Inch Memorial was out there to, um, give us some estimate, and through their good intentions and their, um, assistance have, uh, repaired numerous stones of the cemetery at no cost to the city. And we'd like to thank them for all the work that they've done. Um, we have been in further contact with them because we were trying to identify other locations, and we need to, um, make a guesstimate on those costs. Um, my recommendation is that, you know, the city would, um, take on some of those costs themselves if they are not going to continue to do that, and we can't fully expect them, but they've done a, a great job and a great service to this community in making those repairs at no cost to us. Uh, we also did have, um, uh, I did receive an email from, uh, a law firm within town that wants to contribute $500 for information that leads to the arrest of the persons who did this particular work, and we potentially would get additional dollars for that as well because we definitely want to find out who did this work and prosecute them to the full extent of the law. Um, we have discussed, uh, also, uh, additional security at the cemetery, uh, and how we do that, but obviously I don't want to discuss what those methods are, and I'll obviously let that out, um, with the public and how we're doing some of those things. Um, my understanding was something like this had occurred within the cemetery approximately 10 years ago. Um, I know other cemeteries where some things like this has happened, um, and it's catastrophic to those who do have, uh, loved ones that are buried there, and it definitely does hit home. It was covered, uh, by numerous news crews, and because of that, it did get the word out through Facebook and through, uh, other social media, and we did have a, um, regular occurrence of vehicles driving through there for Thursday, Friday, still the weekend, and this morning I was out there again. There were still people that were driving through, just ensuring, uh, what had transpired. But we're trying to get a full account of all the items that were damaged at the cemetery. Uh, we'll make that report and assist the police department and try to, uh, apprehend the individuals that actually, that actually did that. Um, we do want to make sure that, uh, that people are going to be aware of this, uh, reward that is, uh, posted by the law firm, and it, it may brought up, again, during council comments, um, but whether people want to make contributions, but it is to the, uh, assist with the arrest, uh, of the individuals and by providing information for that. Uh, we will not necessarily hold that money, but that money will be, um, uh, dedicated and paid based upon whatever tr, uh, transpires, uh, through this time period, but I believe it's up to six months, uh, from the time that the actual occurrence, uh, did happen. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding that, and I just want to give one more, uh, council comment regarding, um, Michigan Seamless Tube. All of you do have a packet in front of you this evening. Uh, it is scheduled to go on the August 26th city council meeting. Uh, the information is provided to you, uh, through the city attorney with, uh, with a letter and asks if you have comments regarding this, that you get it back to myself or the attorney by the August 19th date. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
Councilmember President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Paul, I have a question regarding, a couple months ago, I had asked about estimates for going green. So say, for instance, we go the route of getting rid of paper all entirely and getting iPads or Surface Pros or something along those lines, and even keeping them here, but just having them so we can cut back the paper flow? How's that coming along?
Uh, the first estimates that I had, and I, uh, spoke with our IT professionals, uh, was approximately $800 per, uh, pad with all the information loaded on, um, if the council members could, uh, review packets, you'd get the information. We would download that information or email those things, perhaps in, 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 uh, numerous emails. Uh, we'd have to go through a training session as well. I know not all council members wanted to have that. Some council members wanted to just continue, um, to have, um, uh, those packets, so the estimate would still be just under $5,000 to be able to do that. We had not budgeted that within, within this year's, um, uh, 2000, 2019, '20 budget, um, but those are just preliminary numbers based upon the type of, um, uh, items that we would purchase for each member.
So just to recap, that was just one company that you looked into?
Well, we spoke with our IT professionals and asked them regarding getting us estimate for, uh, the best cost for what would, uh, the council members would actually be using the items for.
And that would be $800 per council member?
That's correct.
Whether or not-
And I can get firmer numbers for you, but those are preliminary numbers. Sorry to not give those numbers to you at, at a earlier date.
No, that's okay. It's a rough estimate. I appreciate it. But, um, that's whether or not the council members want to use them or not. So say we give it as an option, so that way people who still want to use, like, um, hard copies, they have that ability, but at least in the event, in the future, this whole council goes green, we have seven of them.
And we would like to completely go green if possible because that, and if you're making four packets or you're making 12 packets, it's still taking the initiative of an individual setting their time aside and letting a copier run and just binding those last few packets is not that much more time, but, uh, concentrating efforts to assemble packets. If you do all of them or none of them, that's, you know, that's probably the best way to go. But of course, you can still go green, and we can still save a lot of trees in the process.
Well, a lot of money, a lot of time. We could be putting our time and money elsewhere if we're not making, what, how many packets? How many pages for each packet, binding each packet, scanning and uploading, et cetera?
Right.
So I think that time could be better put to use. Um, but with that being said, it's not budgeted for this fiscal year. However, is there a way that we could discuss making room in the budget for it?
Of course you can. Council can make that motion at any given time regarding, um, you know, requests to, uh, search and get, uh, bids for the items, and council, you can, uh, make an amendment to the, the budget at any time.
It's only 2,800 bucks. I mean, that-
Uh, under $5,000, is that what you said?
Oh, I'm sorry, 5,600 bucks.
Yeah, exactly, right.
If council's comfortable with it, I'd like to make that motion that we look into it. Sorry, go ahead.
Kenny, go ahead.
Now, you said to get what hardware? An iPad? Or are we talking about the Surface?
There was, I believe the Surface. I'll have to look at the exact items. What I can do is I, I can provide the information to me with your next council update, and then you can make a better, better engine.
Obviously, some are user-friendly than others.
Exactly.
As far as managing this information.
Right.
You know, we're not looking for the least expensive option. We're looking for the one that's most appropriate for us.
Right, and those, and those were approximately dollars, like I said, they were given by IT people, but what I can do is, within my next council update, I'll provide you more information, you get a more firmer number, so you'll be able, if you want to make that particular motion, you'll be better informed about making it.
Okay, let's do that.
How's that?
I would be, yes, I'm 100% on board.
Okay.
Another question as well, I'm sorry. So that number that we're talking about, this rough estimate, would that include training? Or is that going to be separate costs?
It'd be additional costs because I don't know the extent of level of training that everybody has here regarding use of those items or the type of programs that we're actually going to be downloading on them.
I assumed it would be. I anticipated it would be, but just good to know and good for the record. So, thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for Paul?
Well, it's only in that it, there is, it would matter. You get on a different platform, you're familiar with one, one outfit. Getting somebody else's, uh, OS could be kind of dicey. I don't know where you're starting over. So I'd, I'd like to have a little run-through with, uh, the Surface before I could really make my mind up.
Yeah, and I'll get that range based upon a couple of different, uh, items that we potentially, that you could have for use, whether it's, you know, $800 to $1,000 or whatever it may be based upon items, and which one's a better use to council members.
Thank you, Paul.
Anyone else with anything for the city manager tonight? Okay, great. We'll move on to public comment. Please remember to state your name and address.
Uh, Ryan Laris, 716 Grand Court. Mr. Richards, your comments tonight were absolutely deplorable to Mr. Langen. Um, I don't know what information you, uh, acquired, and you're pretty usually good about acknowledging your facts, but this gentleman seems to be very intent on doing what he's doing, and, uh, I, uh, you know, when you have a, another council member, uh, requesting that you cease your comments, uh, because you're sitting here downright attacking this man, I'm going to tell you right now that if I get on this council, you're not going to be attacking people with this microphone. You're going to show everybody with respect. This man was trying, he was caught in a deer light, deer with a headlight caught in a car. He, he didn't know what to do. And, uh, you know, it's the planning commission approved, uh, his, his thing, and, um, I, I ask that you show the citizens and the people that come up to this microphone with sincere respect. Thank you.
All right, we will close pub, public comment. Uh, before we go to council comments this evening, uh, Chief Vogel, do you have anything?
Uh, real quick, um, the good and the bad and the ugly. The good is the locker rooms are done, the bathrooms are done. They look great.
Excellent.
Um, the good and the bad, we had a fatal car crash in the city, uh, Friday morning. Um, the really bad news is our equipment quit, and it was catastrophic. Uh, we found out that the motor's all done, can't be fixed. Um, so luckily, Green Oak had an extra. They're temporarily letting us borrow. Um, I'm planning on working with Paul to kind of figure out what our solution's going to be. So we have working jaws of life right now, but they're borrowed.
Okay.
We took the unit to Cougar Motor in Novi, and they said it was completely shot. We then caught a hold of the manufacturer, and they've gone out of business, so we are kind of scrambling to come up with some answers, so I'm, I was on the phone all afternoon trying to figure out some. I got really lucky that Green Oak had an extra.
Right.
So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Councilmember Kille, go ahead.
Yeah, I was curious. Are all of them, do they all couple up to the same pump?
No. So, we bought, we, we received this item, it's older, by grant. I don't know if you're on council, if you remember when we got it. I think it's-
No, I don't remember the year, but I remember getting it.
And it's an unusual brand. Um, they're not in Michigan anymore, so I called around, and it looks like we're going to have some trouble. Um, I'm trying to find, maybe we can buy a used one. Um, I'm not sure what we're going to do. So it, they were able to start the extrication, get the roof flapped, and then it quit. Seized the motor, and it's broken, and I don't think it's worth putting money into it yet. It's an unusual product, so we're kind of, you know, I hope to have more update in two weeks.
Okay.
So I'm playing with Paul.
Is the hydraulic unit remote from the-
So-
Yeah, because I was just wondering.
That's old techno, old technology is you have a power unit that has hydraulics, that has hoses, that works the tools. Today's technology, it's all battery. They've gotten rid of gas engines. It's all battery.
Okay.
So that's what we're weighing.
Well, thanks for getting that covered for-
Yeah. Unfortunately, he, you know, we got him alive to the hospital. Unfortunately, he died there. It was, it was pretty amazing. They still did it in 15 minutes to get the person out, for, uh, as violent of a wreck as it was, so.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what do you estimate to be the cost if you were to purchase a new item?
Well, I don't know. There, you know, because there's many options that I'm trying to weigh. If we were to buy, I found a demo set of brand-new battery pack for about $19,000. New would be about $28,000. Um, but I'm trying to see if there's something cheaper because I, we didn't budget for this, and, but I'm scrambling to find, can I buy the same motor? Since we have the tools, do we fix it and try to find someone out of state that can work on it?
I, I'm just going to make a, um, just a general comment. Uh, this is just one of those reasons, you know, why you have a general fund balance. Um, and I don't want to risk anybody's life. I mean, this is a pretty-
It's pretty important, but I feel I need to sit with Paul to see what-
Yeah.
His envision is, what we think we can do. Um, I don't want to throw something out there without having more information for you, and I, I, you know, I want to make sure Paul supports what we think and, and what we do, but that's what I'm leaning towards until I can find a better option. I got really lucky with Green Oak. You know, I, I reached out to Lyon Township, um, and Green Oak, and the chief just like, "Well, borrow ours." They have, they went to all the battery ones, and they're like, "You can borrow our," that's their backup. So that's pretty lucky, actually. It was the same brand, so.
But that's a person's life.
Yeah.
That, that's sitting there.
We got really lucky we could finish. It was pretty, I, the crews were amazing that night between the police department and the ambulance and, and the firefighters. 17 minutes for, if you had to see the pictures, it was pretty, pretty awesome. I'm proud of them.
I understand, is that this happened in the, like, in the early morning hours?
One in the morning, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
We will expedite this, and we will discuss this and bring it back this as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I don't need to pull it without more information because I want to make sure that it was best for the people. We have to have something, so I'm, I'm working hard on it, I promise.
You have to.
Thanks, Chief. Councilmember President, go ahead.
Chief Vogel, thanks for the update. Can you be sure to pass along our gratitude to Green Oak Township?
Oh, I do. I, I love Chief Gentry, and they've got a great township board. Um, so I, I'm docking, I'm making a letter now, actually.
Thank you, and that's a huge help, and thank you to-
It was pretty amazing when he called me, said, "Well, just go get ours."
It's good camaraderie.
Yeah, and their mechanic brought it and set it up and made our tools work, and it was-
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Pretty great.
All right.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Baki, do you have anything for SLPD tonight?
Uh, just that, um, again, we're just asking the public to help out with the cemetery. Any information, please give us a call. Um, we're trying to get the word out to everybody if they hear anything, get any information, please feel free to give us a call.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to council comments this evening. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with regard to the, the cemetery, uh, I was out there last week with the, the city manager, looking at the, the damage that had occurred out there. Um, it was disheartening. It's, it's probably an understatement. Obviously, a lot of emotion centered around the, uh, the cemetery and the, the headstones. I guess the, uh, the, the silver lining in, in part of the cloud is, it didn't look like, uh, the headstones themselves had, uh, had cracked in half as a result of being toppled. Uh, I was out there later with the, uh, with the crew, Inch Monuments, who did a, a great job repositioning them, re-adhering them to the bases. Um, they look like, uh, most of them were in, uh, in pretty good shape. Um, unfortunately, you know, there's, there's those that other people came and, uh, set themselves, so we'll have to find those so that when Inch comes back, they can re-address the, uh, the issue and get them set properly. Uh, it's unfortunate. In a lot of cases, there were, uh, small statues and mementos that the families have left, obviously, at the gravesites that were destroyed and, uh, basically are irreplaceable, so, um, that is unfortunate, and, uh, I know the, the families, obviously, those, those things meant a great deal to the family to place it at the gravesite, so, uh, hopefully we find the, uh, the individuals responsible and do take, uh, the appropriate action. But on behalf of Inch Monuments, I was out there with the, uh, the crew that was working as a three-man crew, two trucks. Uh, they spent the better half of half a day taking care of that issue, so, uh, it looks, it looked pretty good. Uh, on another, uh, subject, I want to basically let everyone know that the Salem South Lyon District Library will be holding its gigantic, uh, book sale from Tuesday, August 20th through, uh, Saturday, August 24th, so come on out early for the best deals and selection and restock, uh, your bookshelf. So come on out early for the best deals and selection and restock your bookshelves. Also want to remind everybody that summer's not over yet. We have movies in the park scheduled for this Friday, August 16th, at around dusk, when they'll be showing Lego Movie 2, the second part, so bring the family out and have a great time. And on that same night, on the other side of McCatty Park in the historical village, this week's concert in the park will feature Rich Eddy's Rockin' Oldies Band, which always brings out a pretty sizable audience. The group is always a crowd pleaser, so come on out this Friday at 7 o'clock for some great entertainment. And speaking of the concerts in the park, I want to mention that, you know, I've had the opportunity to regularly attend the concerts during the course of the summer. And during that time, I've had an opportunity to discuss the Veterans Memorial that's planned for that area. I've spoken with a lot of folks that were out there attending the concerts about the memorial, and had a chance to answer a lot of questions from both residents and non-residents alike. They're excited about it and are looking forward to it. One individual in particular was extremely interested in it. Mrs. Tamara Ward, who's the administrator at Abbey Park, was so interested and supportive of the effort that she has contributed $1,000 towards it on behalf of Abbey Park, towards the memorial's construction. So I want to thank Tamara Ward and Abbey Park for their generous contribution. And this is just another example of the strong sense of community we have here in South Lyon, where people pull together and help one another, whether they live within the city boundaries or not. We are truly one community. So, ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to go fast and concisely, people. First, I think I should mention what I wanted to say on Consent Agenda Item Number One. Of course, I'm in favor of Wichita Brewing Company, but to Mr. Cottongim, if you can organize it, please don't block our museum area parking area during the hours of 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., if you can. We'd appreciate if you left that, made sure that was left open, because our museum is open on Saturday, 1:00 to 4:00. And that was all I was going to say on that consent item. Other items I wanted to bring up to your attention, some of it's already been covered, and I'll go real fast. The properties that Bob mentioned, the Bonner Properties, Uptown 111 and 113 Lafayette, I've been in there, took some pictures, and I've talked to the guys, and they're going great guns. They're working primarily on the upstairs at this time. And it's, what I told them, whatever you guys do, it's going to be a miracle, it's going to be a great, it's a victory. Keep on. By the same token, in that same location, there's a new parking lot paving between exquisite kitchens and Osslander Center right there. Looks beautiful. If you ever happen to be by there, take a look. The next one down is interior renovations at the Providence Center. I think I mentioned this before, they were completed, and everything looks beautiful on the inside. It cost about a half a million dollars. Number four, the exterior facade approved at the Planning Commission last week for 135 East Lake Street. I met those owners after the meeting, I talked with them a little bit, and gave them a few heads up on a couple of things, and I said, "Whatever you guys do, it's got to be wonderful, because we're all in favor." On the number five, the new well, number four, we all have great success. I just want to mention one thing that you don't know about the new well, and I can, I got my information from Mr. Varney over here. During the course of that well digging, the underground, let's see, hydrogeologists were on site during the flushing process, and they could radar the water flow underground. By the way, 127 feet down is where the tip of the point was for that well, and it went to 1,000 gallons a minute. I got pictures of that. And they measured it at an increase to 1,400 gallons a minute, and that's a lot of water. So our, the conclusion being, our money was really well-spent on this well. Thank you, Mr. Varney, for that information, and I hope to pass it on to the public, I think they'd love to know that. Also at McCatty Park, the SLARA event is Wednesday. Bring your children, it's going to be wonderful. They'll have these games and these bouncing rooms for kids to play in and such, and it's free. Some things aren't free, but it'll be free. And a Depot Day meeting for organization, anybody wants to participate in Depot Day? It's 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning at the freight house over in the museum area. And in regards to the demolition of the properties, the money's all set. I understand that the demolition of the house in McCatty Park and the library, it's all been budgeted. It's got to be done. I understand. I would hope we could save those juniper trees, if possible, that are alongside the north side of the Gray House in McCatty Park. The house has got to go, but those trees, we could use them someplace else. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you. With respect to the cemetery, if anybody knows anything about who is responsible for the destruction of that property, please do the right thing. Quite frankly, your friends are not worth it. You will be more respected by the people who really, really count. That's your family and your community, if you just come forward with information and just do the right thing. I actually heard on the radio where an individual excused this behavior by saying, "Well, it's summertime and the kids are bored." I found that to be the most disgusting comment I think I've heard in a long time. Boredom is not an excuse for destruction of property. I found an article dated February 14th, 1988, from the Los Angeles Times, they were talking about boredom is no excuse. A police investigator described as bored, the three boys who built a pipe bomb that killed one of the youths last July. Whoever hit a 16-year-old Jennifer Pratt in the head with a 2x4 as she rode on the back of her boyfriend's motorcycle hasn't been caught, but many in her North County community suspect boredom, partying high school students. When several athletes were arrested on assault charges, the mother of one of the boys convicted said children have no place to go except unsupervised parties. I'm sorry, but none of these are excuses, none of these are excuses for injury to person or injury to property. And the person who made that comment, I hope you rethink what you said, because you are expressing a value system that is not consistent with the values here in this community. Next, I would like to thank Jim Runstead, who is our newly-elected state senator, for his Family Fun and Festival Guide for 2019, 2019, and for his attention to the city of South Lyon, which includes mention of our Memorial Day Parade, South Lyon Depot Day, South Lyon Pumpkin Fest, and yes, he even included, right here, South Lyon Farmer's Market. And this goes all over the state of Michigan, and I want to thank Mr. Runstead for him thinking clearly of South Lyon. I'd also like to thank the Fire and Police Departments for making a whole lot of kids happy last Saturday when they showed up at the Hidden Creek Block Party. We had a fire truck there, we had a police vehicle there, and I think there's some future responders in the making. And I want to thank the Fire and Police Department, they were passing out badges, passing out things for the kids, and it was just absolutely a wonderful day that I really enjoyed. And I really want to promote these block parties. I had a great time with all of my neighbors, it was a super event. It was an old-fashioned time where you sat down and you connected and communicated with people that you live with. You learned about their kids, you learned about what they're doing with their lives, you learned about their new job change, you learned a lot about your neighbors. And I think we're missing that kind of human connection in this day of this crazy, you know, Facebook and the nastiness that's out there. Get away from social media and get back sometimes to just some basic arts of sitting down and enjoying the conversation with people. I'd also like to thank all the sponsors who helped make Motor Fest a real success. More importantly, thank you Doug Cook, his wife, the staff, for your incredible commitment to South Lyon. Also, I want to thank a new attorney to South Lyon, her name is Julie Paquette, and she is located in the Business Center with Huntington Bank. She does wills and trusts and POAs. She's like me, she keeps evening and weekend appointments. I've met her, I've had an opportunity to chat with her, and she's absolutely charming, and I just want to welcome her, and I hope everybody else does. Julie Paquette. As to the Veterans Memorial, I would like to also thank Tamara Ward, and just like to let the community know that we are about $1,000 short. So if anybody, you know, 10 people with $100, you know, there's that $1,000. So if anybody can come forward, please come into City Hall, meet with our Economic Development Director, we're just looking for $1,000 more dollars. It can be done, I know it. So thank you, Tamara, I know you don't want to be publicly thanked because you like to do things behind the scenes, but thank you very much for your generosity on behalf of Abbey Park. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a great week.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Councilmember Preziean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two things, my general mantra, please volunteer if you know anybody or you're interested yourself. Pumpkin Fest is going to be added to the mix, make sure you volunteer for Pumpkin Fest, I believe they still need volunteers. Parks and Rec, Cable Commission, we have a whole slew of different committees, commissions, things of that nature that could use the help. And there's always something going on in the community, so it's a good way to just get involved. My second thing I wanted to mention was, it's election season, so I have received so many different phone calls, emails, things of that nature about, "Hey, what's your recommendation? Do you know the candidates? Who would you recommend?" And I just wanted to let everybody know as a blanket statement, do your homework, do your homework. Go out, check out their Facebook pages, go to the meet and greets. If you have an opportunity to meet with them one-on-one, ask questions. What are things that concern you and your community and that you want them to advocate for? We have a few candidates tonight in the crowd. Who are the people that are coming to the meetings, that are paying attention, that are watching the meetings, things of that nature? You really want people who are going to advocate for you and for your loved ones and for the other residents within our community. Not only that, but those of you who are running, make sure you pay attention to your downtown. Go visit your downtown businesses. It's not just about the residents, but it's also about our businesses as well. Our downtown is so important, and all of the businesses, not just the downtown ones. And lastly, if we, I mean, we have candidates in the crowd, but we have candidates up here as well. And it's kind of unique, because the candidates that we have up here, you can do your research on them, go look at the videos, go look at past newspaper clippings. Who works well with one another? Who has been propelling this community forward? Who is an obstructionist? Who is working well with others? There's so many things that you can do on your end, homework-wise, to figure out who's the best candidate for you to vote for. So do your homework. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Preziean. Councilmember Kibble?
We had the Whipple Street Block Party on Saturday night, and I had the good fortune of being able to capture a photo of a balloon that was going to be landing over at MST's lot over there. So that was kind of an extraordinary thing, and it was a beautiful night for it. This weekend was a spectacular time. It's kind of getting steamy again, so I'm looking back at those days and thinking that was really terrific. I really can't extend enough gratitude to Inch for having taken care of our cemetery like they did. That is truly above and beyond, and I'm sure that everybody that has loved ones there that were worried about that are as grateful as I am that they were as giving as they had been. So that was, that was a very calming kind of response for a lot of people, so that was, I can't thank them enough. So, and it's kind of nice, when, it was spoken to earlier, that there was an awful lot of traffic going around in the cemetery over the weekend, and I can't help but tell you, you should go to our cemetery. It's a very well-maintained piece of property, and when you see the names of, the historic names, people's names are on street signs and things, as a forerunner to who is living here now. It's just a really nice place. They do a great job of tending to it, and we have some really, from the basic Civil War kind of monuments, to some really pretty spectacular ones down there. So, but once again, thank you, Inch, we can't thank you enough for what you've added to our comm. So that's actually all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
Quickly, I want to piggyback off Councilmember Preziean's volunteer thing. Lisa, we have a relatively urgent opening for-
Alternate for the ZBA board.
Okay, so we need an alternate for the ZBA board. If you are at home and have been on the fence about getting involved, this is a, this is the perfect role for you. It's, I can't imagine that you will be called on more than once, maybe twice a year, but we definitely, that is a position that we need to get filled. So if you've been on the fence and you've been thinking about it, "Well, maybe I don't have time," that's a perfect one to try and break the ice and see how it is. So please, if you're thinking about it, that's, we need you for that. Quickly, I know we haven't been, we haven't had a meeting for a while, we had the extra week there at the end of July. I had the privilege to go and represent the city of South Lyon at the Michigan Mayors Association Summer Workshop back on August 1st and 2nd in Port Huron. It was my first time to Port Huron, it's a beautiful city. Picked up a lot of great ideas that helped them kind of bounce back in their city of 30,000. They have a beautiful historical district, obviously we can't match up with that coastline, but, so that was, that was a lot of fun to be able to do that, and met some great people that represent many of the fine cities here in the state of Michigan. So with that, I hope everyone is ready to enjoy the rest of the summer, and my favorite time of the year, fall, and football season is coming. So with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night, all.
Thank you.